Does a outstanding job. It was like that diamond in the rough. And fortunately for us, you know, Will came to our attention a few years ago. And since we brought him on board, he has done an outstanding job in almost every area of law enforcement. So we've been very pleased with his work ethic, his professionalism, and the quality of the work and everything else he's done for us so far. So that brings us to the reason we're here today. Officer Handgun, during your short tenure thus far with the Rollinsville Police Department, you have proven you've become a valuable asset for the department. You have received a couple of awards, a volunteer to take on additional responsibilities without question or complaint, and have sacrificed your personal time for the department. The staff looks up to you for guidance, and they, more importantly, they respect you and the decisions you have made thus far. Effective immediately, you hereby promote the sergeant, a well-deserved rank, and I am confident that you continue to do an outstanding job for the citizens of Rollinsville. Congratulations.
Thank you.
The select board here to present him with the sergeant's badge and the stripes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
If you can hold, hold it out or something like that. I want to make sure we get this on the Facebook page. Any words to mention you'd like to throw out there? Put you on squad? Did he call us?
Thank you.
Thank you all again.
All right. Who will live the minutes from May 20th?
Yes, I'll write them.
You're all set?
Good.
By consensus, move through with them. Unity input? No? Okay. Department, police is coming back, fire is not here, highway is out.
We can do off our now, or we can table it if you want to do it at the end.
I'm going to do it. But we have to roll them out hot like everyone. We'll table it to the end, that's okay. Okay.
Did we have something from Highway or?
Um, there's a person sort of, that's up to you when you take them.
Okay, we can go ahead and do it when we do the others, okay. Town administration, space needs committee draft charge, should facilities director?
So I followed up with the facilities director with the will of the board that we hold off until school is out. It is almost out, there's about three weeks left. I've not heard about a specific date. It's a very busy time for him, but I'm sure he'll make it happen. So when I know more, I will let you know. But also, I talked to Tom Clark, our building inspector, about this building, and he's going to make himself available on that same day so that they might be able to look at it from different perspectives. Recently, the Dover City Hall, which is also an old building, underwent a thorough evaluation. So he's going to bring that so that he can see the different talking points and see if he can lend some voice to each of those talking points for this building.
Sounds good?
Yep, that's great, thank you.
Thank you. Please consultant, this pertains to the two proposals that were put out there. Are you prepared at all to discuss it and go forward, or do you want to wait?
Um, does it make sense to wait until we get an evaluation of the building, or is that, is it really, is it really, they fit together?
They're separate and they fit together.
Right.
So it's all about whether you want to keep them moving separately, or whether you want to know one before you move on to the other?
Um, no, I mean, I'm on board with hiring consultant. Do you, did you get a sense from either company as to the timing, like?
Um, at the time, it would be a short number of weeks before they could start. It was fairly immediate. I don't know if that's changed now, since that's, you know, we're in a different season now. So I don't know if their workload fluctuates, and that way I can touch base with them again.
Okay.
I have my copy with me.
The other thing is, we don't have any kind of contract. So if you wanted to approve it conceptually, I can get some kind of, something in writing that could include a timeframe for next week.
Can you remind me as to what the two?
Scopes.
Scopes were.
The first company is locally owned by a former police chief who has evaluated police stations and police departments. And that scope can be about the staffing level, about how the staffing, how the staffing is ranked, you know, whether or not your officer heavy or patrol heavy, for example, or whether it's balanced. Because they'll be in, looking at the department, they will make comments about the size of the department and how they feel about that. It would cost them a couple of additional hours, maybe a few hundred dollars more if you wanted them to weigh in about details and how many cruisers we have or how many details we do and likewise. So that's the first company. The second company takes a, and they look at data, but not the way I got the impression from the second company. They take our data, raw data from the county, and they filter it for type of event, how, the duration of the event, time of day, day of the week, so that we can figure out, or they can let us know that we should be more staffed at night, less staff during the day. So it's all of the above from company A plus Rollinsford, the size of Rollinsford, the projected growth, given the development pressure on the region and the available land in Rollinsford, so that if they recommend that you build a police station, what is the appropriate size, given our level of incidence and potential for growth, so it's the right-sized building for us. But they also look at whether or not we should regionalize or, she actually said have a, have a department at all, like regionalize, because we are below the population that is required to have a police station. Not that they're recommending that, but those are the things that they look at. Given the geography and our neighbors, you know, even if it makes sense to regionalize, that doesn't mean there's a partner, all these things. But they give you a more expansive view about the problem at hand and not just specific things about staffing levels and number of cars.
Okay.
So would you consider rereading the proposals and then making a decision next week?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay, so can we put it on there that a decision should be made next week? Okay, all right.
And they did start to read the report, so the second one did a report for Portsmouth?
They did a comprehensive report for Portsmouth, which I forwarded to you. However, for the price point quoted, it would not include that level of detail. It would just be a PowerPoint with data points.
Understood, okay. Thank you.
All righty. Ever Source proposal?
So Mike had concerns about signing a multi-year contract, even though the cost of this loan slash grant would be covered within the operating budget under current energy costs. He wasn't sure if that was legal or not. I checked with the National Association, and they've seen people do it and people not do it. In other words, it can be handled in the operating budget, or you can put it in a warrant article, they've seen it both ways. They suggested for more clarity that we speak with the Department of Revenue. However, I don't have a copy of the contract to forward to DRA. So I've asked for that numerous times. He's also, by the way, looking into a proposal for streetlights. So it may be that he hasn't worked out that proposal and he's waiting to put it all together. I'm not sure. But I haven't been able to get a read from DRA until I can get some language for them to review.
Because we also got notification that their rates are going to go up. So sooner we can do it, the better we're going to be in the long run. But we need to have language for sure.
Yes.
All right, so we're going to keep it on the agenda and hopefully Caroline can have more in both parts next week. Bob McMath?
Hello again. The state of New Hampshire has received a grant from Homeland Security to reprogram all emergency responders, portables, and moles. So that they're all going to be uniform with the entire state to include everybody's frequency in the entire state.
Wow, that's huge.
So what happened is, we would pay to have all of our radios reprogrammed by two-way, and then we get 100% reimbursement from the state this fall. Okay? So I have a form here that needs to be filled, signed by a member of the select board to indicate that we have 14, 18, 19 radios in the police department to be reprogrammed, and that you're aware of the fact that the town pays initially and gets reimbursed by the state. I anticipate the cost will be about $400 to reprogram all the radios.
Get the money.
And I can absorb that within my budget. So this here is a list of all the radios, second period, it uses the same true. This is the actual part of the unit, but that's the inventory of all the radio units right there.
How did this affect highway and fire with regard to mutual aid?
There is no reason that highway would need all of the fire frequencies and police frequencies from the rest of the state.
Not that they would need them all, but like, if there's an emergency and other people come in here to help, would they be able to communicate with them? Are they now?
Well, they have all of the correct frequencies that they need for now. And all of our frequencies are correct, but there are some others within the state that have recently changed within the county and elsewhere. And this would make everybody on the same page. So when I get in a, well, we'll say like, I get in a summer with a cruise, and I do what, channel three? Channel three should be the exact same as the Rollinsville channel. So we'll all have the same frequencies, we'll all be in the same banks, in the same zones. And it's a form that's put together by the state police.
So numbers aren't changing, you're just going, your frequency number's not going to change?
No.
You're just, you're kind of blending every one that they have.
We're actually good in Rollinsville.
Yeah.
It's all the communities that have recently changed, their information will be added to our database.
Okay. All right, so that doesn't affect any other department within town that's going to, they still can contact you via the radios?
Correct. And when the fire department gets their new radios, they assume that they're going to go through two-way. Two-way is the vendor for this area for a Motorola radio. So they'll design up your program under the new state specs for fire.
Okay, good, very good. Now, does this include your cruisers?
Yes.
What is that, like a portal? Is that listed as a portal?
No, this is mobile.
A mobile, there it is, sorry.
There should be four mobiles, a base station, and the rest of portables.
Okay. You sound this right?
Yep.
Okay, so any questions?
No, no objection.
Want to make a motion too?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we accept the grant in New Hampshire for radio reprogramming.
All right, and I'll second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, so I sign where?
Where the pink tab is, yeah.
Okay.
Or the future.
Today's 6:30?
Yes.
All right, and where are the?
And then the bottom, the bottom half on the page on your eight?
This one. And who sends it here?
The state. Once they get the application from us. Okay, purchase order number 1682 to cognitive and behavioral therapies of Newburyport for one return to work psychological evaluation for $400, and that will come out of our preventive health line item.
Okay. I'll move purchase order 1682 to cognitive and behavioral therapies in the amount of $400 for a return to work evaluation.
I'll second that. Any discussion? I'm hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, purchase order number 1681 to the city of Dover. Last week, the cruiser number 72, which is the 2014 Explorer Explorer, was making some noise in the back, and come to find out, the rear wheel bearing was fused solid with the knuckle unit, and they found that we needed to also add a belt tensioner and four tires. So that is going to come up to approximately $1,200, and that will come out of our vehicle maintenance line item.
I'll move purchase order 161 to the city of Dover in the amount of $1,200 for repairs to cruiser 72?
72, yes.
All right, I'll second it. Is there state tires? Is there a recommendation of what protective tire goes on?
Yes, they get the state bid tires.
Okay. So the price is?
So the price is cheaper than?
Good, is it going to get, okay.
Correct.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Officer, if you have to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And the city of Dover orders so many tires that they, they get them directly, as opposed to going through, like Sullivan Tire is the vendor for this area.
Okay.
So they're getting directly. Purchase order number 1684 to Two Way Communications in Newington to purchase one remote speaker microphone for our new officer, which is a microphone that goes right here, and two earpiece with translucent tubes, those are the things I wear in the ears when working details, for $259.84, and that will come out of the radio repair line item, that's an anticipated expense.
Okay. I'll move purchase order 1684 to Two Way Communications for $259.84 for remote speaker microphone and earpiece.
I'll second it, and this is for the one who's in the academy now?
Correct.
All those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
And the last one, the big one. Two Way Communications, purchase order number 1683. I went through with the tech down there, and we looked at the equipment that will come out of the Taurus, and what will fit and what will not fit in the new vehicle, some of it will, some of it won't. This year in 2020, Ford decided that they've actually changed the size of the Explorer, they've actually made it a little bit bigger. So not all the equipment will come out of the Taurus and fit into the Explorer, but some of it will, so it's not that bad. So Two Way would take about two months, two to three months to order the equipment. We don't anticipate the cruiser arriving from Ford probably till about August. So we need to give Two Way some lead time to order the equipment, have it on site for when the vehicle is here. So we're looking at all the emergency lighting, we're looking at the cage can go from the old vehicle to the new vehicle. We have to order a second cage behind the seat, because the Explorers had two cages, where the Sedans only had one. Console, you know, center console. The radio, radar unit, MDT, mobile data terminal, will all remain from the old vehicle. So with taking the equipment out of the old vehicle, purchasing a new equipment, and transferring some of the old equipment into the new vehicle, in labor, it comes to $13,167, which will come out of article number nine, and we set them out, we actually set that amount aside to equip the new vehicle.
Can you have the money?
Yes.
All right, I'll move purchase order 1683 to Two Way Communications for $13,167 for equipment for the new cruiser.
I'll second it. Any discussion?
So was that all in the same warrant article?
Yes.
To buy the cruiser and equipment?
Yes, to pay for the first year's lease and the equipment.
Okay.
All right. All those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
This doesn't get paid upfront, only when it happens?
Correct. And we still have a couple of months of that.
Okay.
That's all that I have for you folks, anything else for me?
I saw the note of the, another session for gun safety?
Yes.
Did that fill up, or you?
Yes. We actually have 10. We have a couple people on the waiting list. The classroom is actually this Thursday, and the range, the range time will be this Saturday. So we actually do have enough people that probably, maybe end of July, we'll have another class. So, yeah.
Anything else?
No.
Thank you very much.
Weekend, I changed your emergency light up there. The other one was fried.
Okay. So is that trash?
Sitting in a pile of it. Richard can bring it down to us tomorrow, and we'll bring it to the transfer station on Wednesday. It's got a battery and whatnot, so.
How did you figure it out?
Well, it's easy, it's just three wires.
No, no, how did you figure out it was fried?
No, Richard found it didn't work. So we looked at it, and the terminals on the top had all fried.
You can see it's got the batteries all fuzzy on it.
Yeah, and then at one point, the cover fell down, and both the bulbs busted on that thing. So it wasn't, it wasn't working anyway. So, you know, I think with Home Depot, only like $30, $40, whatever, it's fairly cheap, much cheaper than what those, what they were.
Those were, yeah.
Yeah, because this one here has a small Nike bag, and that one there actually has one of those big bags that you find like in a motorcycle or an OHRV, so.
Well, thank you for joining us.
Not a problem, enjoy it.
I'm not here when it's going off, that's all.
Have a good night.
Thank you, you have a good night. All right. Recreation, all right. So we're at Recreation Space. We've been informed that we cannot have a school for August, which came to a very big surprise to us, since our program goes three, two and a half, two to three weeks in August. And we've already put out registrations and already got tuition and all of that, so.
Just no access to the school at all for the month of August?
Correct.
The bathroom and the?
Well, the bathroom and the teacher's room.
Okay.
But not a classroom?
But not a classroom, in case of inclement weather or very hot weather, they used to be able to go into a classroom. And it's always been that way for this, for as long as I can remember, 40-plus years. So I am going to write a letter to the school board and find out why and see what we can do about it. The gym, depending if the gym does not get its floor done, then we will have access to the gym. But if they get the floor done, nobody can walk on it once it's done, until school starts, you know, is that polyurethane over the floor?
Yep.
So I'll keep you updated, but we just found out last week, so we were all very surprised by that. I don't know.
Any sort of contingency plan?
There is no place to have anything. That mean, we've tried to think about what's in Rollinsville.
Did you get, somebody was looking at a quote for an enormous tent in the yard?
We were, yeah, well, the principal suggestion is to get one of those big party tents.
Yeah.
But what I've gone online, first of all, you get installation of it, and it's going to be close to a grand. Because you're going to have it for almost, well, say, three and a half weeks, yeah.
Yeah.
It's, and I'm not sure that I would want something and have that responsibility that's having it for that long.
If it's even available, of course, for the weekends.
And then if they haven't already been booked for the weekend, that's true. That's true. So Kelly wasn't being into it. I was just going online looking into it, but I was thinking, there's no way, we don't have any money. Yes, ma'am?
I have a 16 by 20.
You have a 16 by?
Well, a 16 by 30, I think.
16 by 30?
Well, you could do some pop-ups for that.
How much do you want for that?
More than welcome to have it. Doesn't have signs.
Well, thank you. I'll get back to you on it. See what, I'm hoping we can still get our classroom back, or a classroom back, but I will let you know. Thank you. So, you know, I think that is, this is something that hasn't thought through enough. People started putting our registrations out there and people paying, and then now you're saying we may have to cancel. So we're, we're working on that.
Okay.
She's not here for grants.
No.
Okay.
She asked for it to be on the agenda, so I guess it should be here.
Some may have, I mean, sorry.
You can table it.
Celia has some things, so maybe we'll table it from now and then come back to it.
Yep.
Because there is some tight deadlines on those.
Could we potentially use some of that grant money to obtain a tent?
Well, that's not what they applied for.
Okay.
Yeah, they applied for t-shirts and, you know, some of their sport equipment and stuff. So when you have a grant and that's what you applied for, that's what you have to do.
Yeah, okay.
Stormwater asset management grant.
Paul Kuzold, who's the chairman of the Stormwater Committee, and I met with John Jackman from Holland Tanner Associates last week. Mr. Jackman's filled out a pre-application for us to submit to the state for an asset management grant for our stormwater system. It's for $30,000. It does not obligate the town to continue to apply and receive this grant, but it is required to be submitted by the end of next week. So you can review it tonight, and I would hope sign it next week. Stormwater's meeting next week, and they will get the details of the scope. The grant would be to assess the assets of the stormwater system, which means the catch basins, the pipes that connect them, the pipes that go out into rivers. What are the conditions of the catch basins? Some of them don't have bottoms, they're required to have bottoms, they didn't used to be, the cross pipes. So what Paul and I felt would be most useful, and we're going to pass this by the Stormwater Committee next week, which can revise the scope with the board's final ultimate decision about the grant, is to take a map of Rollinsford and overlay it with the MS4 map, because not the whole town is in the MS4 district, and then overlay that with the storm drain system, because they don't all connect, and they go, you know, they outfall into different areas, and we need to know where they connect with other systems and where they connect with brooks and rivers. And then to have that map be interactive, so that we can see when each catch basin was last inspected, what the details of those inspections were, the data about how much was cleaned out of them, pictures, and this would include taking pictures or videos of all of the cross pipes, so that we know the condition. And then this leads actually into our next agenda item, the road service management plan, which is to say, every section of roadway from one catch basin to the other catch basin would be considered a segment and be named and assessed, so that we are considering how we maintain our roads differently, so that we are not paving roads two years before we have to dig up and replace a pipe underneath, but that it's all considered together. So that's what the Stormwater Asset Management Grant proposal would be for. The state, Paul spoke with people at DES about other grant opportunities, but they don't really want to have us pursue other grants until we do the asset management first, because essentially, once you know what your assets are and their condition, then you create a plan to maintain them, and that's really sort of the base by which the whole stormwater management plan is based.
Is $30,000 enough for all?
Right, that's, he says it is.
Okay.
Well, so, no, John Jackman. So we'll get as far as we can, what I explained was sort of the soup to nuts of what we hope we can accomplish. He feels as though that's due. He feels as though that's doable within that, within, within that amount. Something to know about this is that it is a loan forgiveness program. So by loan, it means there will be short-term interest to total approximately two to four hundred dollars. Funds would be received in twenty twenty, but, um, so, so the most the town will be on the hook for is the two to four hundred dollars. We'll have to expend funds and as we expend them, we'll be reimbursed for them. But it will, we can start working on the project as soon as town meeting is over. Um, and it can happen by way of its own warrant article or within the operating budget. As far as he has seen, for this coming, yes, March twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty. Twenty twenty, not the current budget?
No, that's all done. So, um, our, the, the stormwater year, um, cause it has its own cycle, is from, um, October first to the end of September. And, and so this will fall right in the middle of our next year. So while it's part of Stormwater, it's not exactly part of our Stormwater Management Program. It's a separate entity that's gonna kind of go alongside it, which is also necessary to feed the Stormwater Management Plan. Which is kinda complicated.
Me too.
Okay, so you have to apply for the grant.
So the first step is to put this pre-application in, um, by next week. It's due the end of next week.
Okay.
And then we will hear in August whether or not this, um, the state wants to continue our application.
You said August?
People at this, yes, in August. People at the state are favoring this because we've actually been approved for it in the past and never took advantage of it because at the time we didn't have a Stormwater Committee. So it's, there's a good likelihood we will be approved. We can modify the scope between now and August. And then if we wanna go ahead, um, we put it on the warrant or put it in the operating budget. And then as soon as, and as soon as it is approved by way of town meeting, we can start working on the project.
Are you receiving the grant this year or are you receiving it next year after our town meeting?
Twenty twenty, after town meeting.
So you're applying for it this year, but you won't be received until twenty twenty?
Yes. Yes. So this is part of next year's budgeting.
Okay. Any questions?
Um, no. I don't, I don't see the need to wait until next week, but if you.
I don't either.
Okay.
No, I mean, I think that we should, we should turn it in.
You can resend it, um, between now and August, um, or, you know, it doesn't go through if it's not put on the, you know, the ballot or in the operating budget. So, um, you can certainly change your minds.
Right. Well, I'll, I'll make a motion that we, uh, submit a pre-application for Clean Water with State Department, long term.
Okay.
Thirty thousand dollars.
All right. And can I just see?
Sure. Oh, sorry.
Is this just the one that, that's okay. Oh, is this the original?
Um, it's all printed. You can decide another one, but.
Is it somewhere else?
It's, it's, oh, um.
He wrote it though. He wrote it on the wall.
I can print a new one if you wanna authorize.
Well, I don't think I wrote on the.
On the signature page?
Pages, I don't know, maybe I did. It doesn't matter.
We don't, we don't feel it all of this.
They're filling all that out, so it just needs to be, um, Mr. Jackman from Holland Tanner.
Are they charging us for it?
Thirty thousand dollars. Uh, so that, you know, to be clear, this is, this benefits them.
They'll do the work.
They're doing the work for thirty thousand dollars, which is why they're filling out this pre-application for us, yes. They're gonna manage the whole process for us.
So do we want them to fill it out and then we'll sign it?
We can certainly.
So we can prove them to go ahead and get it?
I'm not, let me just see.
It's in the back. Whoops.
I don't. So, so all of these other pages are for other projects which are, we are not applying for, which is why it's not filled out. Nonetheless, um, it looks like that part pertains. So let me check with them and I'll make sure that it's appropriately filled out. If you wanted to designate one of you to sign it though, then I'll make it available for later this week.
So a motion's been made in, in seconded, so, um, we, you wanna pursue this?
Yep.
And we will, um, sign it once it's completed by the appropriate people. Is that acceptable?
Absolutely.
Okay, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll let it go. I don't know if you want to, definitely. All right, very good. So you'll get back to us.
I will get back to you.
I'll say aye if you have to sign or.
Um, so Miles, if you want your thing back.
Yeah, you can have your notes back.
Thank you.
All right. So, um, do you have anything else to say about SRPC Road Maintenance Plan?
Um, yeah, just briefly.
Yeah.
Um, I spoke with Suzanne who managed this, um, plan with Stratford Regional. At the time it was created, we were a pilot community for new software, which means that it didn't cost any money. I've spoken with both Suzanne and Stratford Regional about the software and the cost. The least expensive option is still six thousand dollars approximately. It doesn't really change what we already know. So Suzanne's suggestion, it, you know, for, for whatever, um, for whatever value it has, having done the extensive review with Stratford Regional to begin with, is that it wouldn't really change very much about what we know about our data. We move everything up the list and we can put the roads that we just did at the bottom. So like I said about the Stormwater Asset Management, you know, rather than spend that money on information that doesn't really incorporate storm, stormwater, it would be better, even if we go, we may still need Stratford Regional in the future to update that data. The problem with it and why the cost is so high is that they start from scratch with assessing the roads and, and the data. So it's kind of like doing the project from scratch every single time you employ them to do that. It's not just an update. So that's why it's expensive, but, um, at least if we're going to do that maybe every other year or every third year, then we can at least incorporate with what we know about stormwater assets and get better information.
And budget it too.
Well, and budget it too, absolutely.
We didn't budget this.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Let's keep it on our radar in the following.
Oh, yes. Now, yeah.
All right, any other questions, uh?
No.
Okay. Building permit schedule and fees, that is the form that, um, that we had gotten showing derms. Are you prepared to do anything on that? Oh, no. Why don't we, uh, table that until next week and see if we can, um.
I, I did read the schedule of fees and it. It seems, uh, like they're expensive. Um, and, and maybe that's more appropriate, I don't know.
So the other thing is, would the board want Mr. Clark to come and discuss the basis for some of these fees or whether or not we need all of them or?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that might be a good idea, just because, um, I mean, where are we low on or, or, or something like that?
Right.
Maybe modify our own of what we have based on some new information that we read on that paper. Or if there's things that were missing that we could add to it, but yeah.
There, there, there's a lot there that we don't have. We don't.
It's certainly a more complete list of items, but I really feel like it's nickel and dime people.
It, it kind of, you know, I can see why you would say that. I think it's just worthy of discussion so that you can at least be aware of what other communities are doing. And if we're not gonna do it, we're at least aware of the opportunity and knowingly opting out.
All right. I mean, it doesn't have to be, whatever community they can't come and join us. I wouldn't say it has to be free or whatever, but yeah, I would ask if he would do that.
Okay.
Okay, um, employee recognition. I think we've said that we're not doing it at the school, correct?
Um, there was a lot of discussion with that. I'm not sure if that was an actual decision. For sure there are problems with doing it at the school. I'm, I'm not sure.
I think we're, we're also talking about, it's just, we're not talking about, you know, more of a, not a dinner at this point, cause this is no puns, but bottom line is, but, um, a, um, possibly at the library, um, if, if, if it's available for us. Just to have the departments get together and have like a social, you know, just some, um, appetizer type things versus a whole dinner. I think that's something that we definitely could do.
Right. Um, I, I mean, I think in, in concept, this is a great idea. I just feel like it took on a life of its own a little bit and we don't have a budget. And when the, when the real point is to get employees together in the same room, let's keep it simple.
Yeah, that, yeah. So it's almost like a, you know, like a sane appetizer and, and if you would like, I, I can contact the, the library.
That'd be great.
Okay. And kind of come up with a plan and present it maybe in the next week or two of what I would think that we could do. Okay?
Great.
All right. And I would suggest that we kind of move it out until, um, early fall cause there's so many people away on vacations and stuff and it might be bad to do that.
Right. Yep.
Um. But we also have to talk about Michael. Um, but we could do something here for him.
Mm-hmm.
When we know when his date is, um, when he gives us a date.
Right.
Um, that we could do something for his family and whoever, um, and do something here.
Great idea.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right. So I'll get back to you on that.
Okay.
Um, library trustee appointment. And there are, are you gonna be talking about that or do you just want us to consider him?
We, we just need you to appoint him. You don't actually consider him. We decide who it is, but the way it works is that you officially appoint.
Okay.
So he came to the meeting. We've all met and discussed it already on our, it's in our minutes. And, um, all we need you to do is to appoint him until the next election and then somebody will run for that spot.
Okay, so.
I'll, I'll move, we appoint Ben Thayer to fill the vacancy as a library trustee.
I'll second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. So you'll be, do we send him or do you, do you tell him or do we send it?
You are sending it by phone.
You're sending it by phone.
I'll let him know. Let it officially happen.
All right. Thank you.
He needs to get signed in.
Oh, he, he'll have to be sworn in.
He can come to the town hall at any time.
Well, yes, come to see Kate.
Okay, perfect.
Um, okay, Paul to review. Are you at all prepared?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, we're gonna table it. Sorry, you'll get to it.
I understand.
Okay. Um, town administration, board members' activities and updates.
Um, tomorrow night, I believe we have a planning board meeting. Um, it's.
There is nothing on the agenda and I'm not sure whether the chairman will cancel it, given there's nothing on the agenda.
Okay, so.
Okay.
Um, if you can keep me posted, could I, I think I fell off the email chain. I don't even know if there is a.
If, I, I can add you to the group if you wanna.
Okay. Sure. I mean, I'm not officially a member, as you know.
I, I can add you.
Just out of pure curiosity.
I think.
And Stormwater, you said is next week is?
It is June twelfth, yes.
That's a friendly.
I'm trying to, I don't think I have anything on my plate.
Wow.
Right? This meeting again, when?
Can I, can I this one?
Okay. Enjoy your week.
No budget, right?
Budget workshop is next week on Tuesday at six thirty here.
Next week, next Tuesday. I'm, I'm clear.
Wow.
Wow.
So I did reach out to the members of the CIP committee, um, to try to set a meeting in the next couple of weeks. I only heard back from one of the members or two of the members. Um, so I'm still trying to schedule that just to kick it off and assess where we are and.
My committee still?
Um, Kevin Haynes, uh, Suzanne and.
Oh, she's on from, from budget, right? Cause she replaced Kim.
Yep.
Okay.
And Judy Nelson from the school.
Okay. All right. Town administrator update?
Um, so as I said, I'm not sure that there will be planning tomorrow. There, it, this last weekend was a state planning conference. One of the new members was able to go. Thank you to both of you for that. So we'll hear an update sometime about what he thought about and what he found. We just finished our hiring process and I wanted to thank you both and Michael too for your time with that and helping us review the candidates. And that was really good. You have an offer letter in your folder there somewhere. I also wanted to let you know because, um, you're not always aware of what's going on in planning, but, um, the subdivision off of Clem, um, Clement Road, which the developer is calling Olden Burke Lane, um, has, um, met its conditional approval for its revised project. So, um, there will be building permits issued out there very soon.
Okay.
And the road is getting built and all those things. I met with the Seacoast Local Welfare Officials last week, which was a really great meeting. It always is. I've learned a lot. Some of which pertains to, um, one of the cases we have at hand. And we have a new director in Summersworth, um, with extensive experience in Rochester. And so they have, they always have a lot of great things to share, so I was great, um, very grateful to go there. You have a code compliance letter, um, in your folder that I wanted to bring to your attention. It is signed by Tom Clark. If you felt as though you wanted it to come from the board, we could revise it to that effect. I, I also wanted to bring to your attention that Mr. Clark is working on a septic failure on Rollins Road. And I'm bringing that to your attention because, um, given conversations, um, we've had that it, um, compliance or rather enforcement is really at the local level. If people, um, do not take steps toward remediation, um, it's on us to enforce that. And the state isn't, um, I have Tom Clark looking into at what point does the state step in? I think there might be wetlands behind there, but for the most part that's on us to enforce. So it's gonna be a little bit taxing of his time, but, um, I'm not sure how quickly that will get resolved. Computers were purchased for the front office. Thank you. Um, the tax collector is on vacation this week, so that worked out well that her computer is getting replaced once he's gone. And that's going well. The other thing is there have been some, uh, visual changes to the website and I wanted to bring that to your attention so you can look at them and provide feedback if you want. I'm trying to work with the volunteer who manages the website to make it a little bit more user-friendly in as much as the free template that we're using allows and also in as much as Google allows because there are some constraints with the fact that we use Google Drive for all of our documents and having that play with the website. So, um, it's just something we've been working on on the side, so I just wanted to point that out to you.
Have you talked to Tom about three sixty-five?
I've talked to Tom about three sixty-five. He, um, it was very timely because he had recently attended a workshop by the, um, vendor that we use for all our hardware software that the school also uses, um, that provides discounts for government and school. That company provides consulting services that can help people switch from three sixty-five to Google and Google to three sixty-five. So I'm trying to work out with Tia if we wanna have a meeting and, um, see if we can conference call or Skype, um, somebody from that company and learn more about how extensive that transition is and, um, what the cost associated is if they manage it. One of my concerns with switching is that, um, all of our documents have different levels. They're shared with different people with different levels of permission and I'm not sure how well those permissions get transferred.
Okay.
So it would be exhaustive to try to do that on our own. It would be nice if we had help, but I'm not sure how affordable that is. So we're looking into that as well.
So you're, you're talking about for two thousand twenty that.
Oh, this is not, you know, I, you know.
You know, it's nothing, yeah, okay. Cause then it certainly has to be budgeted.
It certainly has to be budgeted.
But if we didn't have some numbers, that would help to see what we would do.
Absolutely.
Yeah, even if we're deciding that doing, just Google is not user-friendly as in some of their, one of their Excel version.
Yeah, yeah, totally agree.
The, the idea of Google is really lovely and it's a great step forward in having some kind of universal central storage.
Mm-hmm.
The, the idea was to have everybody use the, um, the word processing and spreadsheet, um, software that comes with it. The truth is that nobody's using it because it doesn't have the functionality that we're all accustomed to. So, um, rather than have another purchase for additional software, it would make sense perhaps to, um, to transition over into one software package that stores and provides the software that we all are used to using. So we're looking into it.
Okay. All right. Very good. Before we go into correspondence, this will have to, you're come up, um, with our grants.
I also have a purchase order. I can present it to the board. Last week, um, the rec committee decided that we wanna move ahead with a field. I can present it to the board, last week, um, the rec committee decided that we wanna move ahead with a field trip to the New Hampshire Fisher Cats game, and the tickets are eleven twenty-five, there's an email on the back from the Fisher Cats. We're gonna, at this time, try and, um, purchase fifty tickets if we can, um, for the rec as a field trip in July.
Okay, I'll move purchase order one six three eight, uh, to New Hampshire Fisher Cats for five hundred sixty-two dollars and fifty cents, uh, for fifty tickets.
All right, second, any questions?
Um, so, we buy fifty tickets, and if we don't use fifty tickets, then we, they, we want the hook to pay for them?
Um, we pay fifty dollars now, we chose fifty, because right now we have fifty-plus students, campers signed up.
Okay.
And there, yes, there is a stay-back option, so that they don't, and that, all the tickets that are purchased, we are being reimbursed for. The families are paying.
Okay.
Camp Raleigh for them, and my guess is, is that if we don't use the fifty, that they may open them up to parents or something like that. That'll be up to the rec committee to decide, I can't speak for them.
Mm-hmm.
Is this during the day?
It is, they have two days during the summer, um, July seventeenth, and then the following week, Jul- July twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth, which are camp days. So they invite all the local summer camps in, and they, um, give you three ticket options, just a regular group rate for a ticket, a group rate with lunch. This includes a hot dog or peanut butter and jelly sandwich, chips and a soda for every student for eleven twenty-five. And, um, it, then the third option includes a baseball cap and something else. And in the email, you'll see that the final line from the Fisher Cats says, they also have the Blue Ocean Society coming, with an inflatable whale, and some other free fun activities, and then, um, I've talked to them, and for ten to fifteen dollars extra, the kids can upgrade their meal from what's offered to pizza, but they'll have to pay extra, and they can do the bouncy houses that are offered along the third baseline, or the first baseline road, they'll be sitting.
Okay.
Um, but that, those, like, the bouncy houses and stuff will be up to the camp director to decide if it's safe and groups and all of that.
Okay, so, um, we're doing a purchase order, so that you can receive a check from town to pay this, right, or a credit card or whatever it is?
Um.
Is that something that you can do five sixty-two places?
They accept, um, yeah, or a credit card.
Okay, I would do a check.
Well, I can't put that on a credit card, so unless you're gonna specifically, you know, over the purchasing policy to do that.
Well, we have time to do the check.
Um, but there's time to do the check, but I could do a check.
Yeah.
And they will accept fifty percent down and fifty percent later, so.
So this amount is the hundred percent?
That is a hundred percent for fifty tickets, to hold fifty tickets.
Okay, what, what is your opinion on deposit versus?
Um, I would just do a deposit, I would do a deposit.
Okay, all right, so first, we're gonna put fifty percent down, and what's the date?
July seventeenth. Um, o- officially, our registration closes next Monday, um, and we've seen in the past, usually the last week or two, we get a large rush of people coming in, so, and we had eighty, we had over a hundred campers registered last year, so this is a good number, and it counts both the teen camp and, um, Camp Raleigh.
And there's an opportunity to be able to get more than the fifty, if you had more than the fifty, right, cause they said that you could, you could increase that.
We can increase.
Once you know what your numbers are, then, then you can do that.
Yeah, we just wanna start with the fifty, and we can increase later, and if they happen to sell out for that game, then it, we discussed as a committee, it'd be the first fifty kids that.
For the ones.
For the game, the teen camp will automatically go, because it's built into their schedule, but for Camp Raleigh, the first fifty that register, or the first register up to the cap would be the first to go, um, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, ready to vote?
Yeah.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oh, wait a minute, we didn't make a motion yet.
Yeah.
Did you make a motion, did we make a motion?
What about the second?
Yes, you did.
Oh, okay, all right.
Did you second?
Fifty-two.
Yes, you did.
Did you get the P O. number of sixteen thirty-eight?
Yeah.
Oh, we must have.
Five hundred sixty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Yes, ma'am, you got it, all right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, this is the, um, I, I want to have three copies, um, and it is missing one, three complete copies, I should say. It is missing, um, one document, which is the teen camp, um, on the, it's a one-page application, but on the first page, it says, we request these four additional things to, uh, help us make our decision, your budget, your, um, board of directors, your, um, history, and, um, forgot what the fourth thing was, but, um, so, oh, supplementary, um, funding requests. And all of this is in the email too.
Yep.
Um, this is just a printed copy of what was in the email, minus the teen camp. And they have, this, um, Optimum Bank is, they have an office in Dover, they're based at Portwood, and they have, um, graciously waived the deadline until tomorrow, because the deadline was last Friday, upon approval, it's board.
No pressure.
So you're, you're requesting fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars?
Yes.
To, uh, uh, the, these will be scholarships, or?
No, it's to bring out local artists, speakers, and animal shows to the program.
I'm sorry.
It's way in the, the last line.
Oh, okay.
Right here.
Oh, I see it now, it's just a lot of.
It depends what, how much you get is what you'll bring the board, but it's for activities for, um, the day itself, at the location.
Animal shows, I wanna go.
There's several in the area that we could contract with, so.
Okay, um, uh, yep.
Okay, I mean, motion is.
Yeah, I'll, I'll move that we, um, submit this grant request, um, to Optimum Bank for fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars on behalf of the rec committee.
I'll second it, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
You guys can keep those.
All right.
This one, I do have enough copies of, and this is to go to Cumberland Farms, um, we had originally thought of requesting from them items to be, um, resold in our snack shop, however, if you read on the last page, um, it, under requirements, it says donated, um, products cannot be resold. So we changed our, um, ask to a monetary donation, and we're asking for them to donate up to two thousand dollars, and they would go to enhance our programming, um, or extra activity fees and scholarships, um, create an array of entertainment for all the campers and allow some who would otherwise not come, come, and our first priority, if we were to get money, would be scholarships, if there's any available, and then, um, a movie license and projector, um, that we would need for bad weather days.
Okay, what's the deadline for this one?
Um, it doesn't have a deadline, they just, um, as soon as possible, so that we can get a response from them.
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll move that we, uh, make, uh, the grant application to Cumberland Farms for two thousand dollars on behalf of the rec committee.
I'll second it, any other questions?
Yep.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, I'll go.
And I'm not sure if the whole committee got the email, or if it just went to Denise as part of the rec, uh, committee, but we did get, um, a voucher package last week from the sporting goods, and we had asked for fifteen hundred to two thousand from them for donated goods, and they gave us eight hundred, or four hundred, um, dollars in vouchers, so fifty dolla, eight fifty-dollar vouchers to go into the stores.
Did you find out whether or not you can use them all together, or do you have, it's a purch- one for each purchase?
I, I am confused, it, the letter says one thing, and the voucher says another.
Um, okay, we need to find that verified.
And, um, the Camp Raleigh director said she'd be more than happy to go with me to pick out items, and, um, it's been suggested, we wrote it for a ping-pong table, so we'll go look at that, and then any other equipment that needs to be replaced from previous years.
I thought we were looking for like, um, baseball bases and soccer nets and.
Soccer nets, which, um, yeah, and baseball bases, air hockey table and ping-pong table was what was requested. I'm not sure we'll be able to get the ping-pong table as was forwarded to me for that amount of money.
Uh, or air hockey, or if anything that's gonna last, I mean, that's, and where would you store it?
Well, we have a shed at the school.
Oh, big, okay.
But I don't, yeah.
Okay.
Um, all right, well, that would be up to, the, the rec directors should be consulted, I would assume. Yeah, she said, she gave, she sent me a list of lots of things that she would like to see, however, she did, um, give the disclaimer that she is yet to see what's in our inventory, so she would like to look at that prior to making a decision.
Good, very good, well, you have till like December.
We have until December thirty-first.
Of this year, so if you don't spend the.
Before they expire.
Still do it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um, did we vote, did we vote?
No, yes, no, no, no.
Yeah, there's no vote on text.
No.
No, but did we vote on this one?
Yeah.
Cumberland Farms.
We did, oh, okay, all right, so, yeah, she's just telling us vote on text.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, all right, guess, review of correspondence?
We have, um, a Form A five for land use change tax, I thought we already did this one, um, they're taking one point two one acres of current use on eighty, we're over through.
I believe, so, um, you, you did have something to do with that already, this is a different form that sort of files how much total acreage is in current use.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
So I'm not sure honestly why it's necessary now, after you already voted on the amount, but I think it's just paperwork.
Yeah, okay, it's just asking for a signature, so I will sign my line and hand it to.
On the top there by the.
Here?
Yeah.
Hold it for Mike, I don't know if it needs everyone, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Okay, so purchase order, um, I'll, I'll move purchase order one seven one nine. This doesn't say who this, to, oh, mailways. Uh, for two hundred sixty-five dollars for twelve hundred print sort stuff and bundle property tax bills.
Oh, you did that, didn't you?
So, the previous purchase order was for the postage for this process, so it's kind of like, if you think about it, they wanted a deposit, and then you pay balance, it's kind of like that,
Oh, okay.
but essentially you're paying for the postage upfront, and then this is for the labor.
And you verified that this is not the dedication of the other one?
Oh, it's not.
Okay, all right, um, I'll second it, um, any further discussion, hearing that, all those in favor say aye?
Aye. That's it, from.
All right, and I have got a, um, can I second that one?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Geller.
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 Um, this is a, um, a letter of, um, an offer letter for the, uh, new, uh, bookkeeper, administrative assistant for Charles Geller.
Geller.
Geller, that, um, um, starting at sixteen dollars an hour for, uh, twenty hours a week.
All right.
You wanna look at it? Sorry, there you go.
I read the email earlier, um, great, that's awesome.
Can I make a motion?
Yeah, uh, I, I'll make a motion that we offer employment to Charles Geller.
I heard he spoke that.
Yeah.
G O E.
L L E R.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I think, at least I'm making a motion.
Okay, all right. And I'll make a second to that, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
Thank you.
Who do you want to sweep in?
That comes to, yeah, I can, I can, no.
Um, we have a purchase order one six three seven to B and B Offset Printing, printing of fourteen hundred newsletters, two hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-five cents.
Did you, you moved that?
I moved it, yes, yeah, any discussion?
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
I have a purchase order of one six two one for Ambrose Equipment, this is for one month of excavator rental, for a total of twenty-three hundred dollars.
Uh, second that.
Okay, any discussion?
Um, so, this'll bring us through, like, the end of June with this excavator?
Yes, and this will complete the project.
And it will come, this should complete the project, and it's within the budget, and now before.
It wasn't budgeted, yeah.
Right, wonderful.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? I have purchase order one five two five to Martha Kuchar for the Doe Burial Ground Memorial Day Cleanup for a hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Um, I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? I guess it's something that happens every year.
Okay, so this comes out of the cemetery?
Yes.
Okay, that's it?
Yep.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Now we have, um, three, um, letters of employment for, should we do a second one?
I think you can do two.
Okay, we have three counselors that we are offering, um, for Camp Raleigh.
Yeah.
Okay, Thomas Riley as a counselor for thirty-five hours at ten dollars an hour, Brayton Early for a counselor for thirty-five hours and eleven dollars an hour, he's a returning one. And Arianna Sullivan for thirty-five hours at ten twenty-five an hour.
Okay, uh, I, I move we, uh, accept these offers of employment.
Okay.
Make these offers.
Okay, and I'll second it, and I believe, um, my understanding is, this completes the, can you confirm that, is this?
They're supposed to be eight, I don't know if the eight have gone out.
We'll just see.
I don't know that we've sent out eight, I, I'm thinking it's not eight, but it's nearly that, so it's good to know that there's eight, I'll, I'll, I'll check that.
Did you know the ones I left on your desk last week?
Yes.
Thank you.
I do know that three of them had come back, so we, you would only do this in two, once these go out.
I'll just defer a list of names.
Well, yeah, we'll get a confirmation on the list of names, but.
I'm gonna take her.
Oh, sure, um, if not, we can get that taken care of, cause we'll, we need to get it taken care of.
Oh, yes.
Um, before the weekend, in case we need CPR, or per se, because it's a Saturday, so, make sure we get that taken care of. Um, any other discussion on them?
Yep.
Okay, did you make a motion?
I did.
Um, so all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, okay, so I'll just sign them when I get them back. Okay, so, this, this is telling us that the rates, if you wanna take a minute, we'll pick up the rates going up for, um, Eversource?
Just that one, no, there's, another one came in the math day, so I have two of the three. Just that one, no, there's another one came to mass today, so I have two of the three. So, I need to check names, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Which one of these services do we follow here?
I thought offhand it would be the second, but I didn't look at it extensively.
Right, G?
It's something that we should really look into for budgeting, though. Because my guess is, even if we go forward with the conversion, that we're going to be on the hook for higher rates to pay for that, since that's what's going on.
Right.
So, we need to budget for that. It is a clarifying question we can ask, but.
Well, because assuming everything gets switched over to LED, we'll be using less.
Right, but the rates stay the same, you know, to pay off the loan.
Okay.
So, I'm not really sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I think he should.
From EverSource, a notice that our rates are increasing by two point five percent this year, and an additional one point eight percent next year.
I don't have to do anything, I can just change my services.
It can just say now that Xfinity's changed some of their packages.
Yeah, letter dated May twenty-third of nineteen, that Xfinity is changing some of their TV services. Can I work through? So, it affects you?
Yeah. Lot of words.
Yeah.
So, we'll just say that we are notified. We get notified on every change?
Every change, yes.
Because it's franchise, right?
Yes.
Yeah, alright, okay.
So, Miles, I discussed this letter with Denise, but you all received a letter from Avatar about an abatement application received the two thousand seventeen tax year that was denied and appealed. It did not yet go to the Board of Land and Tax Appeals, the first step is mediation. So, this letter is from Avatar, saying that they've made it through mediation. And he's suggesting that you all decrease the value of this property. This is formerly owned by the Bennetts at the end of Silver Street.
Okay.
By thirty-six thousand four hundred dollars, due to how the barn was entered into the Avatar software versus how he's now viewing the barn to be valued. So, assessing ultimately lies with the select board for you to approve or not approve. He is recommending that you sign the abatement for this value. And if so, then he will defend that with the T L A, who will arbitrate over the final conclusion of the abatement. But he needs your voice as to whether or not you support the conclusion of where he came to. He goes into some detail in the letter about how he valued the barns separately, rather than together, and how that affects the value. Denise was thinking that it's a little bit confusing, and it reads kind of like six of one and half dozen of the other. And if you thought it valuable, then I could invite Mr. Roberts in to discuss how he came to the change in value.
The reason why I'm confused is because it's one building now.
Yeah.
I guess it was three buildings before, and they put it all onto one roof, and it's one building now, the square footage has not changed. So, I'm not sure why we'd give thirty-six thousand. And I guess that's my, if it changed the, you know, if it made it bigger or smaller, or whatever.
Yeah, I agree, that this, so that the CAMA system treated each entry as a separate building.
Within this one big building.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, I think if we could get some clarification from him, if he's willing to.
Come in?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'll arrange that, thank you. So, you're also on the correspondences?
Yep.
Okay, so.
The welfare was tabled, I just wanted to remind you.
Yeah, we wouldn't, yes, that we could do. Any input? Anybody?
Let me start? There were a bunch of people that live in the Water District that have been attending meetings and are having a pretty fair amount of concern about how things are being handled there. And I am fully aware of the subtleties between, like, the Board of the Library of State and the Board of Selectmen, and that this is an elective board that has separate RSAs from you. But some of the concerns that I have, and that the group has, are that some of the things that could potentially happen could have a huge impact on the town. Just the Svega Letter from D E S came into the Water District about our well being run below where it should be run. A lot of the concerns have to do with what will happen if we end up polluting the river, or we end up compromising the drinking water property values, the reputation of the community. Not to mention the fact that police have had to be called to these meetings for the way that they're being shared and handled. So, I wanted to speak as a member of the Water District, and a person who's been following this closely, let the board know that this is going on, and make sure that it goes on the record, that people are super concerned about it. I also wanted to suggest that you potentially look into ways that as a separate board in town, we may have some overconfidence going forward. But what are, what can we do? What options do we have to do anything about it?
Okay.
And I don't know if anybody else in here wanted to speak, or?
Anybody else?
Yes, Angela Matthews, and I live at four thirty-seven Locust Street here, and I'm in the Water and Sewer District. So, I have both services at my property. There are, as I understand it, there are about five hundred households on the system, all residents of the town. So, bringing this concern forward on behalf of all of us who live in the town of Rollinsburg, and have some concerns in particular about some potential backsliding. And I'll give you one example. On Locust Street, I've lived there for going on five years, I'm not a very long time resident of the town. For three of those years, I repeatedly brought a concern about low water pressure on my street to the Water Commission, and was told repeatedly that they were various reasons. In the winter, there's ice, and that slows the pressure, that lowers the pressure. In the summer, it's not a full tank, whatever it was, there was a seasonal reason for why I had really low water pressure. And so, last year, about last year, it was down to a trickle. And I went to another district meeting and brought it to the attention one more time to the commission. Superintendent Ray McNeil was at my house the next day at eight A M. He came inside my house to check all the pressure, to see what he could discern from that. He then went outside to the hydrant down the street, and he said, "I'll be back in five minutes, and we'll see what happens." He replaced an aged rusted valve in that hydrant, and it immediately restored the pressure in my system. He came back to check and see if that had done anything, and I said, "Oh, it's more than a hundred percent better, it's like five hundred percent better." So, then he said, "Great, you'll see another change shortly, because I'm gonna go to the hydrant on the other end of the street." And he swapped out a valve in the hydrant, which on the other end of the street is across from the grade school. So, my concern here is that, in terms of backsliding, what I mean is, if we, we have the expertise of someone who is very, very qualified to do his job, and pays attention when someone brings something to his attention, which was not my past experience. And that is the reason that I'm very concerned about what is, you know, beginning to happen and percolate in our district. So, I thought about the impact, so it seems like a minor inconvenience not to have very good water pressure in your house. So, that's one thing, but it's a safety factor. If those fire hydrants are not able to produce water at an amount that would put out a fire in either the grade school or any house on that street, what would that danger be to the entire neighborhood? So, that is my experience with the district, and with my great satisfaction in the changes I have seen. Now, these things cost money, there's no question about that. It costs money to meet the kinds of standards we have to meet in the twenty-first century. And the things that were mentioned earlier about the integrity, not just of the system. And this water table, everyone's sharing the water table. So, if we think this is related only to the five hundred households who are drawing water off towers, the water in those towers comes from someplace. So, every house is impacted by the Water Sewer District, which is another reason for the Select Board in the town of Rollinsburg to consider managing that district in a different way. It's a district within our town, it's a village within the village. And so, the other thing that I wanted to say about that is the environmental impact to the entire ecosystem, which Tamara was talking about a minute ago. Those are reasons why the Select Board and the entire town of Rollinsburg should be concerned about what happens in the Water Sewer District. Even though it does not attach itself to every house, it serves and impacts every house in this town. So, I will share with you the comments that I wrote and my concerns. And I'm looking at what's happening, you know, it's like, oh, Flint is a long way from us, Kentucky is a long way away. And those are recent examples of crisis in water systems. There's a crisis in York's water system, and they're relying on Kittery to provide them with water. But their requirement is, if Kittery is gonna send them water, they have to put ammonia in the water. Well, they already chlorinate their water, which would create a toxic gas in their system. So, these kinds of problems that are coming closer and closer to our community are of concern to me, and of concern to how we manage this district. And I do have, I would like to just hand you my remarks, which I did prepare in writing, and.
Thanks.
To share with you, so that I would be on record with my concerns.
Thank you. Anybody else? Does anybody know when the next meeting is? Karen, do you know when it is?
What is?
The next Sewer District meeting.
June twelfth.
Time?
Six thirty P M. at the Legion.
No other comments? Alright. Motion needed to go into non-public. We have to go into non-public, so after that, our meeting will be over.
So, I move we go on a non-public session to address welfare.
I'll second it, you'll call, Miles?
Yes.
Denise, yes?
It's on the, it's in the, it's on the floor.